By the authority invested in me, I hereby declare the meeting of the Conshohocken Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that comes before it.
Please rise. Let us pray. O divine master, in deep humility, we place ourselves, our thoughts, and our plans in thy hands. We beg thee to fill our minds and our wills with the gifts of wisdom, understanding, counsel, fortitude, knowledge, and piety. Help us not to think of self or personal desires, but rather consider the responsibilities laid upon us. Help us to promote as far as possible the welfare of our people and to treat them with impartiality and justice. Grant us the power to set a good example in thought, word, and deed, so that thy blessings will be showered upon us and the people we represent. Amen. And the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Totino?
Present.
Councilmember Griffin?
Here.
Councilmember Sokolowski?
Here.
Councilmember Barton?
Here.
Councilmember Stokely?
Here.
Vice President Flanagan?
Here.
President Leonard?
Present.
Mayor Aronson?
Here.
Thank you.
I do have one announcement this evening. Council had an executive session before the meeting involving personnel matter, legal matters, and property matters. The first item on our agenda is the presentation for the dedication of the public meeting room to Jerry McTammany.
So, we will... Council wants to thank everybody for being here tonight for this dedication. And this dedication is to someone that, first of all, I want to talk about the building. When we started the building and we talked about buying this building, and Jerry was against it. And he did all the redevelopment in town, but he thought that the building should stop, slow down a little bit. But we pushed and we pushed and we purchased the building and we made it a beautiful borough hall, which after he walked through it and he saw it, he was very happy about it. Okay? So, we're here tonight to dedicate this room to him for all he's done for this borough and more. He's done so many things for this borough. So, Colleen's going to read the resolution.
So, bear with me. Okay. A resolution of the Borough of Conshohocken, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, naming the borough's public meeting room located in Borough Hall 400 Fayette Street, Conshohocken Borough, the Gerald McTammany Meeting Room, in honor of Gerald Michael McTammany and his contributions to the Borough of Conshohocken, post-humanistically thanking Gerald Michael McTammany for bettering the Borough of Conshohocken, making it a better place to live, repealing prior inconsistent resolutions or parts of resolutions, and containing a saving clause and an effective date. Whereas Gerald Michael McTammany was born on April 29, 1931, and passed away on February 9, 2014, as whereas Gerald Michael McTammany proudly served his country in the United States Marine Corps from 1950 to 1954, rising to the rank of sergeant, and whereas Gerald Michael McTamany married his wife, Mary Burns, in 1953 and was the father to three daughters, Kathleen, Marie, and Maureen. Whereas Gerald Michael McTamany was voted into office as a council member of the Borough of Conshohocken in the fall of 1971, entered office in January of 1972, and served as council president for 18 years. Whereas Gerald McTamany found serving as a council member to be one of the greatest honors and most satisfying experiences of his life. And as well, Gerald McTamany took office during a time of severe economic decline in the Borough of Conshohocken, with many long-term borough industries having left the borough under closed businesses, resulting in the exodus of approximately 3,000 residents over the course of just over a decade. And as well, Gerald Michael McTamany was vital to the redevelopment of the Borough of Conshohocken, sowing the seeds for the vibrant community and wonderful home that the borough of Conshohocken is today, as whereas Gerald Michael McTamany understood the need to balance redevelopment with the quality of life and community, including the recreation of Little League fields at Suck Cliff Park and a special interest in the Conshohocken Fellowship House and Conshohocken Midget Football. As whereas Gerald Michael McTamany was particularly cognizant of the socioeconomic diversity of the borough, laboring all residents, rich or poor, as borough residents, regardless of wealth or background. As whereas notwithstanding his focus on the future of the borough, Gerald Michael McTamany prioritized paying homage in the past, taking an active interest in the Conshohocken Historical Society and the restoration of John Elwood Lee Mansion. As whereas his love for the borough never faltering, Gerald Michael McTamany continued serving the borough after leaving the office in 2002 as the borough's code enforcement officer and very rarely missed a council meeting from 1968 through 2014. Whereas the foregoing are but a sample of the contributions of Gerald Michael McTamany to the borough, and as whereas Gerald Michael McTamany stands as a shining example of the quality of persons calling the Borough of Conshohocken home and was the definition of dedication to public service. As whereas the Borough Council and mayor of the Borough of Conshohocken wished to honor Mr. McTamany by naming the borough's meeting room Gerald M. McTamany Meeting Room, with hopes that finding themselves therein, whether public servants or members of the public, will strive to live up to Mr. McTamany's example. The public meeting room of Conshohocken located at 400 Fayette Street, Conshohocken Borough, is hereby named the Gerald McTamany Meeting Room. Forever in the honor of Gerald McTamany and all he did for the Borough of Conshohocken, shall all those present in there strive to live up to Mr. McTamany's legacy of public service, fairness, and fidelity. Almost. Is that good? Okay. The resolution shall... I'll go ahead and say the last part. The resolution shall become effective upon its adaptation today. Thank you. That's all. You have the plaque?
Yeah. I want a couple people want to say a few words. Jerry Nugent, good friend of Jerry McTamany, want to say a few words?
Sure. Happy to. It's really a delight to be back with you tonight. Good evening, council members and other officials. Certainly hello to the McTammany family. I'm honored to be here to say a few words with regard to Jerry and certainly a good evening to the residents that are here. I had the good fortune to have been involved with Jerry from the time that he entered his service to Conshohocken Borough, as referenced in that resolution, so dating back to 1968. So, you can see that's been a bit of a long run for me, this date, to be back here 50 years later, talking with you about how this borough has changed and what a difference that Jerry contributed in making that happen. Really coincidental, or I don't know what brought this about, but I just last night purchased a book by Doris Goodwin, and it's entitled Leadership in Turbulent Times. And it focuses on four different presidents in our country, and all different in various ways. One, Abraham Lincoln, Theodore Roosevelt, Franklin Roosevelt, and Lyndon Johnson. Different in every way, but common in one key ingredient, and that is that they were all focused on bringing the community together to try and eliminate divisiveness and quarrelsome attitudes in their local communities, in their states, and eventually as presidents. Another attribute that they all had was a vision and a genetic trait of stick-to-it-iveness. And I think those characteristics were certainly evident in Jerry McTamany as he made his contribution to the well-being, growth, revitalization of Conshohocken. I look back on my life and my interaction with him, and I think of all the different experiences that I've had in life and all the different people that I've met, he is at the top of the list and somebody that was trustworthy, committed, clear in his expression of his opinion, not always in agreement with me or those in the audience, probably not the case with family members, but even with fellow council people. What we got through a lot. I know that Bob made a comment a little bit ago about Jerry's initial reservations about buying this property and then rehabilitating it. And that, I think, was more a concern or interest in the stewardship of the money that was being received by the borough as a result of the redevelopment activities. It wasn't his money, but he looked at it as if he was someone responsible for it. That said, I think as this building turned out to be what it was, it certainly fulfilled one of his dreams, and obviously, it's a beautiful treasure now for the community going forward. So, thank those of you that I've worked with over the years. Thank you for the family sharing Jerry with all of us and all the many nights people are out as council members and other public officials. So, I'm happy to be here, happy to have shared a few thoughts. He'll be in my heart forever, and I best wishes to all and again to the family, thank you so much for Jerry and what he did for this fine town. Thank you.
Now, Jack Cole would like to say a few words.
It's kind of nice that I could follow Jerry Nugent up here because Jerry McTamany would come into my shop over the years for many, many years, and we'd sit in my back room and we would talk sometimes for hours at a time. And I'm always on the hunt for history bits and tidbits, and I'd constantly, for 25 years, I'd say to Jerry, "Jerry, who's the one most person responsible for the success of the urban redevelopment in this town?" And without hesitation, he'd say Jerry Nugent. He'd say, "Without Jerry's guidance, we would have never made it." He said, "We were a bunch of plumbers and borrowers and electricians," and he says, "We know anything about this, and Jerry Nugent put a roadmap down for us and we followed it, and thank goodness for him." So, Jerry, that's what he thought about you each and every time, every time I asked him, and I asked him a lot. So, I'm going to read it for a few minutes about Jerry, and I want to talk to you about Jerry, and then I'm going to talk to you about Jerry. And, Colleen, excuse me if I repeat a few of the things you said. We must have been peeking at each other's notes, so if you hear some repeat things here, just let it go and we'll move forward. So, Gerald Michael McTamany was born April 1931, and he passed away in 2014. He was 82 years old. He was born in West Conshohocken, proudly served in the Marine Corps to the rank of sergeant, and he was awful proud of that. He married Mary Burns in 1953, the couple had three daughters, Marie, Maureen, and Kathleen. Was voted into office as a councilman in the fall of 1970, and he served for 32 years. Was 18 years as council president and guided this borough. He was extremely proud to serve the borough as a councilman in any other capacity he was called upon to serve. To understand the task that Jerry had in front of him, you have to understand the condition of the borough back when he was elected into office. In 1970, Conshohocken was in a severe declining economy, and it hurt our tax base. We had no money. We had no money. We had no money. Many of the steel mills and other labor-intensive industries along the river and elsewhere in the borough had moved or gone out of business. Many of the borough residents who worked in these mills moved out of town and searched for new labor jobs. The exodus of residents, a loss of about 3,000 residents over a dozen years, left many vacant houses and buildings in the lower end. It also left the borough with little tax money to operate with. Jerry, along with other council members, continued the process of revitalization that had begun in 1959. As we see Conshohocken today, one might think that the redevelopment of the borough was Jerry's crowning achievement, but Jerry was about so much more than the redevelopment of this town. His interest in developing Little League fields at Suck Cliff Park was a priority, the addition of the Minor League field in 1980 and the two T-ball fields thereafter. Jerry took an active interest in the Conshohocken Historical Society. I spent many Saturday mornings with him at the society, talking history of the town, the restoration of the Elwood Lee Mansion, the Conshohocken Fellowship House, and the Conshohocken Midget Football Program. He wanted all these programs to succeed. It was important to him that they succeeded. Jerry worked with all levels of government to ensure the borough received funding for home improvements and heating for families in need during the Reagan era throughout the 1980s. Jerry would go out and he would campaign for people down along Hector Street and Elm Street were struggling, and he would get them heating money, and he would get them money to fix their roofs with. He was all part of that. He had a love-hate relationship with the borough's fire companies over the years. There's a few firemen here tonight that'll nod their heads to that, okay? But he always focused on the firefighting needs of the borough. Jerry never discriminated between rich and poor residents. He addressed all residents as borough residents. After retiring as a council member in 2002, Jerry served the borough as the code enforcement officer and missed very few council meetings from 1968 until his death. Now, we should talk about Jerry. Jerry learned his street smarts growing up on the streets of West Conshohocken. He learned his leadership skills in the Marines and brought them leadership skills back to Conshohocken. We all know about his leadership skills that led to his 32 years serving this great community as a borough councilman, just as we know about his guidance, along with others, in leading this community to a successful revitalization that allows residents today to enjoy the fruits of Jerry's labor. Perhaps a number of people attending this meeting this evening can even recall one or more of the many arguments Jerry had with residents over the years, just as I can recall the time Jerry at Old Borough Hall climbed up over his desk. He didn't want to risk going around that somebody might grab him, but he jumped over the desk to come out into the audience to have a fistfight with Sam Janizelli. It was some firehouse dispute. Am I right, Jerry? I'm right. What many of us don't know is that Jerry served as the borough's humanitarian. Over a period of several decades, when redevelopment was condemning family homes and moving families from their longtime homes in the apartments that were housed above almost all the condemned buildings in the lower end of Fayette Street. When Jerry and Mary married back in the 1950s, they lived in a house at the corner of Forest Street and First Avenue, just behind FW Woolworth Store, then located at First and Fayette Street. They lived in a little corner house for the first year or two. The dozens of families that lived above all the stores along Fayette Street, Hector and Elm Streets, became neighbors with Jerry and Mary. Many of them were school friends or people who knew their parents and other relatives. The Burns and McTammany families reached far and wide throughout this community and West Conshohocken. Although Jerry and Mary only lived at the corner of Forest and First Avenue for a short time, 15 years later, these same neighbors and friends, who were now being evicted from their homes and apartments, sought Jerry out to help them with their eviction problems, a problem that Jerry, as a councilman, was now part of creating. Day after day and night after night, Jerry would meet with these neighbors in need, many of them elderly, and spent the time to explain to them the significance of demolishing the buildings they lived in and raised their families up in. Many of them still with young children, unable to pay rent elsewhere. The rent was cheap above these stores in Lower Fayette. There were condemned stores below them, and yet the apartments above them were occupied. Many of our politicians were quoted in the local newspapers that there was nothing they could do about the evictions, and they weren't obligated to help these residents relocate, but Jerry felt different about that. Early on, Jerry was one of the main cogs, along with Reverend Marshall Lee, to build a senior residence somewhere in this borough to help house many of the elderly residents who were born and raised in Conshohocken and then in retirement were being forced out of their homes. In the early 1970s, our borough leaders convinced Montgomery County to build a senior residence facility in Conshohocken. Jerry was adamant that this senior facility, even though it would be under the supervision of Montgomery County, that Conshohocken residents would have first choice to live in the facility. So, in 1973, when the ribbon was cut by Reverend Marshall Lee at the building that bears his name at Third Avenue and Fayette Street, 79 of the 80 units in the Marshall Lee Towers were occupied by Conshohocken residents. And if I'm not mistaken, Jerry bitched about the one unit that was occupied by an outsider. Once the 25 acres in the lower end of town was cleared by 1981, I'm not mistaken, but the borough had used state and federal money, and an agreement was in place to construct federal housing. Ray Wyman, of course, built that federal housing down there. These public houses at the corner of East Hector and Harry Streets was constructed in 1983. And once again, Jerry was on his high horse calling Dick Tillman, Larry Codlin, and any other high-end politician that would answer his calls, okay, that these houses must go to Conshohocken residents. I was at the ribbon-cutting ceremony in July of 1983, and as I recall, most of the residents that had moved in were in fact Conshohocken residents. Here's what I'm getting at. By 1983, when Lower Conshohocken looked like a wasteland, more than 55 businesses had been moved. 248 buildings had been demolished, and more than 600 residents had been relocated. That was the severity of urban redevelopment. And Jerry was at the forefront, and he stayed on it, and he was the great humanitarian to help them residents see their way out of the locations that they had. While most of our politicians and residents were just tracking the progress of the decades-old redevelopment project, Jerry was in the trenches with the residents and business owners, helping to navigate the next chapter of their life. I'd like Jerry to be remembered as a humanitarian, someone who truly cared, and when a young resident walks into this room and looks at that plaque and says, "Who's Jerry McTamany?" I would like for somebody to say he was a man who cared for the people, not so much for the buildings, but for the people, because this is what Jerry did. I want to thank Jerry's daughters for being here tonight and all their father did. My prayers go out to Marie, who could not be here tonight. She's been battling illness for some years now and truly wanted to be here tonight, and I'm sure she'd be awful proud of her family, along with Maureen. And I thank you guys for your father. Okay, so, thank you for your time on the floor, and if you don't mind, I'd like to run a quick commercial. Jane Flanagan requested that I do this, so she didn't have to mention it tonight. Five years ago, my son Brian and my daughter Jackie started a food drive to help support the Colonial Neighborhood Council. In the past five years, together with the help of a number of small companies that included everyone, from the Seg Bus Company to JP Hussy and so many other businesses in between, I see we have Sal here tonight from Sal's Barbershop, they have raised more than 150,000 pounds of food for the borough's needy families, feeding hundreds, if not thousands, of families in need. Now, here's the catch with this. Let me be clear, this food isn't necessarily going to poor families, but it's going to families in need. We often see a really nice car pull up at the CNC in an effort to get a bag of food and think, geez, they don't look like they need help. But the reality is that while they live in a nice house, drive in a nice car, they lost their job and they've now to work for five, six, seven weeks. They have two or three children at home. For those of you who do the food shopping, you know you rarely leave the supermarket without dropping $125, $150 on a food order. Typically, within a few weeks, this person driving up in a nice car is back to work, and we'll see them dropping off food to the CNC. Right now, starting tonight, they had a kickoff party at the Colonial Neighborhood Council, and we are currently collecting food from now until Thanksgiving and beyond, and are asking for your help, everybody in this room, please. A canned good or two, a jar of peanut butter, a box of cereal is all we need. You can drop off the food to our shop across the street, Cole's Custom Framing. You can drop it off directly at the Colonial Neighborhood Council on East Fourth Avenue, although they do have limited hours. I've served this borough for the better part of my life, and I'm awfully proud of my children who work so hard to make these food drives a success. You'll feel better knowing that you helped a neighbor. So, thank you for your time. Thank you for Jerry McTamany, and God bless me.
So, at this time, we would like to present the family a plaque.
If we go in front of them. Yep. Yep.
And we're going to present this to the family. Jerry and McTamany Meeting Room. To honor and recognize the dedication and the commitment of Gerald and McTamany, who served the United States Marine Corps as a borough council member for 30 years and played a vibrant role in the redevelopment of the Borough of Conshohocken, make it a better place to live, April 29, 1931, and February 9, 2014. And I am very proud to replace and retain Jerry's seat on this council between him and I in 48 years. And I'll tell you, Jerry was a great man to me, because you remember you mean?
He was.
We would like to present this to the family, and also, we are going to put this to the family, and we're going to put a nicer, a larger, larger.
I also want to pass on my sister's regrets that she wasn't able to be here. She's battling cancer, but right now, she's doing pretty good. She just, her immune system was too low to be up here around too many people. One day in 1968, the phone rang. You should have done me first, and I wouldn't have been all emotional. My dad was asked to run to fill the open seat in the sixth ward. He declined, stating he was busy with duties as business agent for the Pipefitters Union and the Knights of Columbus. The reply was, "Don't worry about it. You won't have won anyway." My father never backed down from a challenge, so he ran and won and served for 32 years. His first order of business was to have American flags placed on the sleeves of the borough police officers. He went door to door to register voters, no matter their party affiliation. He felt everyone should vote. Many of the people answered their door were surprised because they were the opposite party. He said he didn't care. Jerry McTamany was a man of the people and a strong advocate for the betterment of the borough. Along with others on council, state officials, and the federal government, he procured millions in grants to renew and rebuild the downtown area into a gateway for business. The housing market had seen deep declines in many areas, but not in Conshohocken, and the desire of many to make their homes here has never waned. Outside of borough business, he helped many with water and sewer bills who were facing shut-off, never expecting anything in return. In the few years before he passed, I spent much time up here with him after my mother died. We frequently ran into people who wanted me to know of how he was there for them, helping them at a desperate time in their life. My dad would say, "It was nothing. You don't have to thank me." I have learned of many more since he passed in 2014. Though my father did not become a code enforcement officer until after he retired from council, he never hesitated to knock on someone's door and let them know of something they needed to correct on their property. One heartfelt story was of a young, single mother with very young children who was not able to cut her grass or have the means to pay someone. That week, my father hired someone to do it and instructed them to do it for the next 10 years. These are just some of the few stories I know of. Our father always said he was elected official, not a politician. Our father always said he was elected official, not a politician. This was so true because he didn't play politics. My father was a very outspoken man who has never backed down from his views or those who would try to antagonize him or sway his intentions. Someone wrote after he passed, "I spent over thirty years working with Jerry on the redevelopment process in Conshohocken, and as I'm sure you're aware, we didn't always agree, but we never ever doubted each other's passion or commitment." I can tell you that after the test of time, he was right more often than not, and perhaps we should have listened a bit closer. Our father's love for his hometown and its residents was the motivating factor in his perseverance with no expectation of anything in return. He dedicated his life to Conshohocken. At eighteen, after the death of his mother, my father enlisted in the Marine Corps and served in the Korean War. He was a very proud American, the most patriotic person I ever knew. He instilled that in his children from a very young age. We learned to respect the flag and what it stands for. My father marched every year in the Memorial Day Parade and honored his fallen brothers, no matter their branch of service. He only missed one parade when he had quadruple bypass in 1998. He always praised the World War II soldiers who had at the roughest, going away for up to six years at a time, and coming home and going on with their life, no matter the horror they may have been through. In the latter years, his health was not conducive to visiting the eight cemeteries and veterans' memorials over a four-hour period every Memorial Day, but plow through he did. I was there in 2012, the last year he marched at age eighty-one. Even though the heat index was in the nineties, he wore a suit coat out of respect. My telling him it was too hot fell on deaf ears. His inhaler got a good workout that day. Our dad always said Conshohocken is the closest place to heaven. He knows the other heaven now, but I will venture to guess the earthly one is still his favorite. He said repeatedly he was most proud of serving his country and his community. Our father would be humbled and very proud to be honored here tonight for what he never considered a job. Ironically, he spoke out many times at recent meetings before he passed against the millions being spent on this borough hall, and now he has room here.[768.88][768.88](laughter) My family thanks everyone for honoring and remembering our father. We will never know a greater man. Jerry McTamany was our hero. Ooh wow![781.63][781.63](applause)
Maureen, do you just want to do a picture with the?
Yeah.
Somebody have a camera? Jack? Jack?
Yes.
Where's Donna? Is Donna still here? Oh, Brittany, okay. No, no, the family, the family, you all come up.
Come on, like that.
That's up to you.
Jeez.
Then get in the front.
Short.
Maureen, don't stand behind his tall.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your father.
I know, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you for Jerry.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good seeing you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda is the public hearing on the 200 block of Washington Street, Millennium Block A, Millennium Block Four, conditional use application. Mr. Peters?
Thank you, President Leonard. Hard act to follow, and this will be nowhere near as interesting, but this is the place and time, if we go on the record, please, the place and time for the conditional use hearing for the application of Millennium Waterfront Associates LP for the property located at the 200 block of Washington Street, known as Millennium Block A. The property is owned SP2 zoning district, and the applicant is requesting conditional use approval pursuant to Section 27-1503 of the Conshohocken Zoning Ordinance as amended to construct a 617,000 square foot office building with a height of up to 230 feet. This matter was last before you on August 15th, 2018, at which time it was continued to this date and time. I indicated at that time that the applicant had been informed that it would be the last continuance that council would be willing to grant. I'm entering tonight as Board Exhibit B. Board Exhibit A was the application entered over a year ago at this point. Board Exhibit B is a letter dated October 15th, 2018, from Ed Campbell, Jr., counsel for the applicant, indicating that the application would be, is being withdrawn without prejudice to applicant, to resubmit at a later time, and obviously, that'll be contingent on the zoning ordinance still being the same at that time. What I would like from council this evening is a motion to accept the withdrawal of the application without prejudice to the applicant to refile.
I'll make that motion to accept.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
With that, we'll go off the record for now.
Thank you, Mike. The next item on the agenda is a hearing regarding waiver of off-street parking for 121 Fayette Street, Insomnia Cookies. Ms. Stettler?
Thank you. Property at 121 Fayette Street is in the Business and Commercial District. The commercial space is somewhere around 1,500 square feet. There is no parking on this site. Under Section 271307(c) of the Borough Zoning Ordinance, Borough Council, at its discretion, may grant a waiver of off-street parking. The property is proposed to be occupied by Insomnia Cookies, which will be a retail business, it's not a restaurant. And they, they have representatives, or I thought you might be the ones from Insomnia Cookies. The two prior businesses at this location were both granted waivers. Someone from Insomnia is here to discuss their business, hours of operation, and number of employees. So, Alex?
Hello. My name is Brian Baker. I'm the Vice President of Operations for Insomnia Cookies. Since we started in the Philadelphia area, I'm hoping a lot of you are, if our marketing department's done its job, are already familiar with our brand somewhat. But for those of you who are not, Insomnia Cookies is a retail establishment. We serve warm cookies, milk, and ice cream to a late-night crowd. We are open till three in the morning. We deliver our cookies. A lot of our businesses across the country, we have 143 locations, are on college campuses, and, you know, urban nightlife areas where there's, you know, activity in the evening. For people to get something beyond the typical greasy, heavy food, something a little more comforting, like warm cookies. Also, with the delivery aspect, for people in, you know, the medical field, first responders, people who are up late, can have a pint of ice cream delivered to their door when they're watching a movie or working a late shift. You can get cookies delivered. Hospital stations tend to love us because we can have a dozen cookies sitting on a hospital desk as, you know, the nurses are working through their shift. So, we do not require a lot of retail space. We're not, as she said, a restaurant. We don't offer comfortable seating like at Starbucks. Our typical customer in-store time is usually under five minutes. People come in, they get their cookies or their ice cream, and they head out. So, we're usually more of a, you know, a quick stop. So, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
So, there isn't any seating?
He couldn't hear you.
Any seating?
Typically, we usually do have, like, some high-top tables, like, more of a counter space with two, three-bar stools, just for people who do want to sit down and eat their ice cream, or take a break when it's hot outside and cool off. But we do not require or have a space for a lot of people to sit down in any way, shape, or form.
What were your hours again?
How many employees do you have?
I'm sorry?
How many employees do you have?
How many employees do we have total? In a typical store, on, say, a Saturday night, there's going to be two to three people in the store working and two to three to four delivery drivers, depending on the store's volume, which, so, not a, you know, exorbitant amount of people working.
Would this site be your commercial bakery, or would this just be a distribution point? What would you actually physically be doing in the building?
We bake the product on-site, but the batter and dough is made off-site and shipped to the stores.
Okay, so it's not a commercial bakery?
Correct.
Okay.
And what were your hours again?
During the week, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 a.m., and on the weekends, we typically open up at 11:00 a.m. and go till 3:00 a.m.
So, I noticed that you just mentioned delivery, and you said three delivery people?
It depends on the store's volume, but typically, we start off a store with about three delivery drivers in the evening. During the day, there's typically only about one delivery driver.
Okay, so that would be in the evening, two more cars?
Yes.
Okay.
So, you did say 3:00 a.m.? I mean, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 a.m.?
Correct.
Yeah.
We see the business during the day for office parties, you know, birthdays, things like that. There's definitely a need for that as well into the late-night aspect where we originally grew from, when we started about fifteen years ago.
Right. Where would you anticipate the delivery people's cars would be when they were coming in or not delivering?
We typically would have them, you know, pay for parking in the metered spaces out in the area, when they can find it. We would also look to be, you know, finding local businesses that might be willing to rent spaces to us after they close down, since we are open later in the evening. That's worked out well for us in a lot of locations.
Why we need to get the zoning, loading it up, loading.
Right, with the, in the traffic style.
I see the problem with your delivery men, they would have to double park in order to pick up and deliver in front of your store, because that metered parking that's there is being utilized by the restaurants.
We instruct all of our delivery drivers to always follow all legal parking rules. They would not be instructed to double park illegally. So, they would have to find parking, even if it does take us a little longer to deliver, before they could come back into the store and get their next order. We do not run orders out to people in the street. That is not how we operate.
Okay, okay. So, in the letter, it said ten to fifteen employees. That would be total employees, not on-site at any given time?
That would be total, yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any more questions?
Do we have any other retail establishments that are open till 3:00 in the morning? Is that something different that we would have to consider?
Yeah.
I get their point, where their location is, so they'll be open an hour after the bar is closed.
Seven-eleven is open.
Seven-eleven.
And they are walking from their, I'm assuming you're assuming your business is coming from, at 3:00 a.m. until 3:00 a.m. is from the bars closing.
Something open later?
Yeah, we would see people.
And I'm assuming you've had experience in that, and as history dictates, that would be a popular time for your business?
Yeah, most of our volume does happen between 8:00 p.m. and 1:00 a.m., but we do see, you know, people leaving the bars wanting to get something to eat before they catch their cab or their Uber home, you know. And I know a concern that I've had voiced in the past is security, things of that nature. We actually employ live monitoring security of all of our stores, so we actually have, you know, cameras in all of our stores. We actually have them live monitored from our National Call Center, which is based out in Newtown Square. So, there is people there. We have the ability to get video footage, you know, very, very quickly, if something does arise, you know. Typically, in our experience, things that happen, most people coming to a cookie shop are coming in in a good mood because they're about to get a treat. It's not really a problem like in bars or things of that nature. Typically, we've seen, you know, a police officer stop into our stores and say, "Hey, we just got a alert, someone used a stolen credit card here. Is there any way you could get us footage?" We've turned that around in twenty minutes to a police department before, to really help them, you know, track someone down.
Okay. Anyone else? Any more questions? Okay, so if council is inclined, I would need to have a motion to send a letter of support to the zoning hearing board on behalf of the applicant, Insomnia Cookies.
Excuse me? This is not a matter that will go to the zoning hearing board. This is a matter that council can decide at its discretion, as you have in the past, a simple vote that approves the waiver of off-street parking is all that's necessary.
Okay, let's modify that motion.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
To the borough.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Everyone's on, invite everyone to have a cookie on their first day.
You didn't bring any cookies?
I didn't bring cookies. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
And now, move forward to the consent agenda. The next item is approve and adopt the September 5th and September 19th meeting minutes and approve the September ending treasurer's report and accounts payable.
I make the motion to approve and adopt September 5th and September 19th meeting minutes, as well as the September ending treasurer's report and accounts payable.
And just to clarify, the accounts payable is in the amount of $1,394,331.18.
All in favor?
I'll second it.
We have a second, and now, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Under unfinished business, consider approving Resolution 2018-22, creating a parking task force. So, on this, I would need a motion to approve Resolution 2018-22, creating a parking task force.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
To the borough.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Everyone's on, invite everyone to have a cookie on their first day.
You didn't bring any cookies?
I didn't bring cookies. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
And now, move forward to the consent agenda. The next item is approve and adopt the September 5th and September 19th meeting minutes and approve the September-ending treasurer's report and accounts payable.
I make the motion to approve and adopt September 5th and September 19th meeting minutes, as well as the September-ending treasurer's report and accounts payable.
And just to clarify, the accounts payable is in the amount of $1,394,331.18.
All in favor?
I'll second it.
We have a second, and now, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Under unfinished business, consider approving Resolution 2018-22, creating a parking task force. So, on this, I would need a motion to approve Resolution 2018-22, creating a parking task force.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is consider approving Resolution 2018-23, adopting a support animal policy for borough property and events.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next item is consider approving an agreement of sale for parcel number 05-00-00666-004.
There's no address.
That was good.
No address.
That was impressive.
That was no address.
Motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
We need to add one additional item to that. We got an estimate of closing costs, so we need to also make a motion to approve up to $800 in closing costs.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
To include the closing costs, up to $800.
Can we go to tell the audience what that's for?
Go ahead, Councilman Stokely, if you'd like to.
No, you can.
No, go ahead.[1723.33][1723.33](laughter)
Solicitor do it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do it. So, this is a property that's located on West Eighth Avenue. It is adjacent to an existing property that is currently owned by the borough. We discussed it at the last work session. It will allow for increased access to the property that is currently owned by the borough off of West Eighth Avenue, and the purchase price, because it is public information, is $11,000 for the property. The $800 in closing costs is to cover the title insurance and the title insurance company's work, and that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We need a motion?
A motion for the $800, yes, please.
Okay, I would make a motion for the $800.
I'll second.
Did that, yes.
All in favor again?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And I need one more motion, I'm sorry. It would be a motion to authorize the borough manager to execute all documents necessary to effectuate transfer.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And also, this is a piece of property that we're purchasing because we own, it's self-kept. And also, this is a piece of property that we're purchasing because we own, it's Sutcliffe Park, and we own mostly all the property up there now. So we just want to get the last couple pieces of the pie there for open space, so people know where the location we're speaking about.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is consider approving proposed pavement markings on West 6th Avenue.
And I'll make a motion to approve that?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Under new business, is Mr. Cole here?
Sal's here.
Sal's here.
Oh, Sal? Come here. Thank you. Yes, please. This is to consider approving a fee waiver request for the CNC touch football tournament.
Hi, counsel. Hello, citizens. So, I've had a, I own a barber shop in Plymouth Meeting, but my grandfather was a barber here in Conshohocken for 50 years. And when I opened up my own barber shop, I decided that I wanted to be more than just a barber. I've done more for the community, like, I always try to find ways to help people in need. And it's a, it just so happens I'm here today when they were talking about Mr. McTammany and the humanitarian efforts he made for this borough. And so anyways, I've had a long history of doing different fundraisers and community events that have really been successful. For instance, this time last year, I was able to raise almost a quarter million dollars' worth of supplies for the Puerto Rico hurricane victims. Now, I'm just a small barber shop in Plymouth Meeting, and this is a national, global event. And I just used my followers on social media to reach out, because I don't know anybody in Puerto Rico, but it was just the right thing to do. Around that time, I met Mr. Cole, and Mr. Cole told me about the Colonial Neighborhood Council. I had no clue about it. And I was able to do the same thing for them. I was able to raise maybe about $1,000' worth of, you know, food and shaving supplies, and toothpaste, and toothbrushes, all that good stuff that the needy families in this borough and surrounding burrows need. So, what I'm here today is not to discuss my prior, you know, things that I've done that have been successful, but to tell you guys about a new idea I have, and I hope that I can have your support with this. Just recently, I just did a riffleball tournament in where my other store is, in Limerick, and it actually, we raised almost $3,000 to stop bullying. And it was for a group that goes out to different schools and talks. It helps provide them with materials they need to go out to different schools and talk about bullying and make it aware to children that it's not all right. But anyways, it was a successful event, and then I thought about it, I was like, well, you know, before it gets really cold, and before, you know, maybe sometime around the bye week of the Eagles, let's do a two-hand-touch, no tackle, nothing like that, just a two-hand-touch football game, you know? Kids, women, you know, adults, it doesn't matter. The point of it was, it was going to be $25 a person, $250 a team, so 10 players for seven-on-seven. And all money that was raised was, you know, the first-place team was going to win a prize, but the rest of the money was going to go towards the CNC. But the best thing about it is I've got support from the Philadelphia Eagles, the Philadelphia Flyers, the Philadelphia 76ers, and the Philadelphia Phillies. They've donated me signed memorabilia. With this memorabilia, what I plan on doing is, for each, for every five cans of food you bring, you'll get a raffle ticket. And that raffle ticket will win you a Wayne Simmons signed flyer stick that I have in my house that I just picked up from the Flyers, or a Robert Covington jersey from the Sixers. The Eagles are sending me stuff within the next couple days. And with my followers on social media, as well as my, you know, my patrons at my barber shop, and Butch's, Butch and Tex, you know, framing, and the local, just pretty much all the businesses around here that have helped me in the past, I think we can make this a successful event. I do not know how many people show up. I will tell you that I'm planning on at least 10 teams of 10 players, just the players. And if I can do that, and each of those players bring five cans of food, or warm clothing for families in need of warm clothing, that's a success in itself. I mean, the extra money after the winnings of the teams could go towards turkey dinners that the CNC will be able to give out. I know last year, I handed out 500, I went pretty much door-to-door and delivered 500 gifts to needy families in this county for Christmas. And I know the CNC does that kind of stuff. They do Meals on Wheels, they do, they're vital for this borough. They are vital for the boroughs surrounding it. And I just, I want to help them help other people. It's not, you know, I can't do it all myself, and obviously, they're a great outlet to support, and I'm just asking for your support to let me put on a good event. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them to the best of my knowledge.
Does anyone on counsel have any questions?
Sal, where were you going to hold this?
Well, originally, I wanted to do in Sutcliffe because there was more open field. However, I believe there's an event going on that day. So I just asked the borough if they could provide me with either the A field, or the B field, or both even, just. And, you know, not to shoot myself in my own foot, but if the fees are a problem, then, you know, it would take out of the mouth of the CNC, but I would be willing to do whatever you guys want me to do to get this event passed.
What's the date?
November 4th, tentatively, yeah, because that would be the Sunday that there would be no Eagles football. And last time I checked, Conshohocken supports the Eagles, so. I'd rather not do it when everybody's glued to a TV screen. I'd rather do it when people have more, like, less to do.
You'd get more players that way also.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, yeah.
What about insurance?
Well, the CNC decided that they were going to provide the insurance, and we do have waivers for each team to sign with each player. And we will not, each player knows the risk, and will not hold the borough, the CNC, or anybody else besides themselves accountable for any.
So Mr. Cole has met with Lauren. He's completed the proper permit form. He's been told the insurance requirements. They're in front of you tonight for the fee waiver. It'll be held at the A field and the B field. The A field will be off-limits, depending on the weather. Lauren and Ray will make that decision.
So, oh, I was just going to say, we need a motion if anyone else has any questions.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Let me read the motion. Motion to approve a fee waiver request for the CNC touch football tournament. Okay, Bob, make the motion.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much for all your service, thank you. The next item on the agenda is consider authorizing the borough to host a boxing event at the community center. Lauren?
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
I'm going to also bring up Allen Washington of Washington Boxing Academy. Mr. Washington has asked if he would be able to use the community center for a boxing event. It's to be held Friday, November 16th. The hours he's asking for are from 3:00 to 10:00 p.m. The event will be held from 6:00 to 9:00. So he needs some time to set up and some time to break down after. They will be bringing in a boxing ring, which has a mat, so it will not damage the floor. And he is planning on 300 people attending this event. And he has generously asked to donate, to donate 80% of the profit back to the borough. There are some conditions that Mr. Washington has agreed to. Mr. Peters is drawing up an addendum, and that, you know, myself and, or representative of the borough, or Mr. Washington, and Mr. Washington will sign. In that addendum, which already with the application, they'll provide a certificate of insurance. The insurance is through U.S. Amateur Boxing Association, along with the agreement of the 80% of the event profit with a minimum of $2,000. That minimum will cover the use of the facility, any extra staff costs, police costs, donation to the fire police, we are going to use fire police. We understand that this could bring a lot of people. So we want to be sure that anybody crossing the street at Fayette, they'll be safely crossed.
That's wonderful.
Okay, so I have, we have considered and gone over the operations of this event. I've discussed it with the directors of each department. So we have discussed all this. Everything has been thought of, unless you all have something else or any other questions. Do you have anything to add to that?
Hi, how you doing? Allen Washington is my name. My gym is over in King of Prussia. I've been there for six years. But I have another gym that's in Ardmore, which I gifted to my son about five years ago. So I've been in boxing since I was nine years old. Also, I've been teaching kids since I was about 22. But I decided that I want to put on a boxing show in the area to basically try to get more children involved with it. And I thought this would be a good venue here. So this is why I'm doing that.
So, we talked about raising money.
This is a perfect opportunity.
Mr. Washington is a good friend of one of our businesspeople, Davis and Buco, Paul Buco. And I had suggested to Paul that we're trying to raise money for the Fellowship House. So Mr. Washington appeared, and now he wants to do this amateur boxing exhibition at the Fellowship House. And I think it's great that he's willing to give back 80% to the community center, so we can use it as we need.
What are the age range?
Well, in U.S. amateur boxing, the age range starts at eight years old, and it goes up until you are in the position to represent the United States in the Olympics. That's what it's all about. So we'll have kids, we'll have children on the show. Some kids on there have more than 35, 40 fights already, so they're working up towards their career. But something, it's kind of like playing basketball. You know, they're dedicated, they're very disciplined, they're in the gym every day, they run every day. And it's only for the best of the best, you know?
Something different for us.
Did you, I'm sure you know, Bob, that Conshohocken used to be a very big box in town for years and years, so.
So these tournaments help the kids or the adults work towards potentially being in the Olympics, if that's where they wanted to go?
Definitely so. It gives them a chance to practice, you know? And most children, they have one minute in each round of boxing. So it's not like, as you get older, you have a two-minute round. Then by the time you get to the Olympics, you have a three-minute round. But every fight for a kid from eight to 14 is a one-minute round, and they rest in between every round. And you have headgear on, mouthpiece on, there's a referee in the ring, there's three judges at the table to justify it. And then there's an ambulance outside. Very rarely do it, kid get hurt because they really can't deliver the blow properly. So there's just flair all over the place, you know? There's never a loser, everybody's a winner.
I think it's exciting, yes.
But there'll be a belt for each kid and a trophy for the other kid, so.
That's great.
So we have met as an administration and reviewed the event and support it. And we've worked through logistics as well.
I also did want to say that also in the addendum will be a financial breakdown. Mr. Washington has agreed to give a financial breakdown of the event.
Okay, on that note, I need a motion to authorize the borough to host a boxing event at the community center.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do, hope you come out and watch the show.
And this is conditioned upon the final recommendations from the administration also.
Thank you.
Chris, can you come to the podium for the next three?
Maybe you get up there, right?
I'm sorry, but this is a bunch of much more mundane housekeeping matters. There are several things we need to do to comply with the state in execution of our federal programs. The borough needs to annually, by resolution, designate a Section 504 officer. That is, Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1974 is amended. And what that involves is that all organizations receiving federal funds, their programs and facilities must be accessible to and usable by people with disabilities. Someone is designated to look at the facilities, see that they are all accessible, to address any complaints, and to look at plans for how corrections can be made. So you would need to find, you know, address someone to be that person.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve Resolution 2018-24, authorizing the designation of a Section 504 officer.
You need to identify an officer.
And it needs to be Ms. Stettler.
Oh.
I was going to say, do we need to name?
No, I need a, I need a motion to approve Ms. Stettler for the designation of this Section 504 officer.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Next item is the reapproval of a number of plans and policies that the borough is required to maintain for, because we receive federal funds. The, there have been no changes to any of these policies since they were approved in 2013 or 2014, 13. DCED requires that the plans be reviewed annually and that they be readopted on a regular basis. So you'll be, I think these have all been sent to you, the drug-free workplace policy, an anti-displacement policy, a police department operating procedures that prohibits the use of excessive force against non-violent civil rights demonstrators, standards of conduct for elected officials and employees related to conflict of interest procurement, contracting, financial management and recording, cost allowable, ability, and program monitoring, the minority and women-owned business plan, which requires that in projects, in public projects that use federal funds, we reach out to minority and women business enterprises to participate in that. And last but not least, our Section 3 plan, which requires that efforts be made to hire low- and moderate-income people for positions that are open in the borough, who, in an area where federal funds are used. We don't have, the borough doesn't have contracts large enough to require our contractors to do it, but because the borough is a recipient, we have to make an effort to hire low, moderate-income people. If you have questions on any of the plans, I'll be happy to try and answer them. But they were approved as a batch. There are two other plans, but they are in need of a major overhaul. So they will come to you later.
Does anyone on counsel have any questions for Chris? On that note, I would need a motion to approve Resolution 2018-25, adopting policies and plans for the CDBG grant program.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And last but not least, we need to have counsel approve by resolution the 2018 Community Development Block Grant application. Borough is eligible for $125,347 in 2018 money. That money will be split between program administration and housing rehabilitation. We will be asking for the maximum in admin, which is 18% of the total grant, or $22,562. And we will have $102,785 to do actual rehab, and that will- And that will include the services needed to deliver the rehab as well as construction. Given our current rate average cost, we're going to be able to do about three, three houses with that. But it's three houses that wouldn't have been done before.
Right, that's wonderful.
When would we get that grant money?
The state has indicated that they will have all their reviews done by March of 2019.
Okay.
And we will probably have a con, a fully executed contract by May. Once you have your money in and they, you have to wait until they send you a letter that allows you to set up your money on the federal dispersment system, because you can't draw money until then, but we can begin to process people.
And it has to be used in 2019, correct?
No.
No?
The, actually, there's a change in that. The state had, used to give us, and the contracts we have now, which include 2016 money and 2017 money, have to be spent within three years. They are five-year contracts with the last two years, if you need an extension. The Borough has only needed an extension, I think, once, and that was because there was an audit problem and our, we couldn't spend any money, so we needed to extend the time to be able to spend it. And the last two years are to be used for audit and monitoring. Now, with the 2018 contract, the contracts will be four years, but we will still have three years to spend the money. We have not really had a problem with that. We have been able to move things along fairly well when we have some money.
Okay, thank you.
So, Chris, what's the limit per house now?
I didn't bring it tonight.
How far?
Family of, one, I think it's around $30,000 or $40,000 for one, and then it goes up with each additional household member.
It's a good amount.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a high, this area has a high area median income.
Right.
So, our, it, it looks like it's high, but, you know, a lot of times, these families, we're dealing with people who are at 30% of median income.
Right.
Or 50% of median income. These are families or households, maybe it's a household of one or one or two, that are living on $15,000, $20,000 a year.
Right.
So, you say three, three houses. Why do we have to give them the max weight? Because there's so many seniors in this, they need these repairs. Why can't we limit, why do we have to do the limit? Why can't we do, you know, spread it out among 10 houses instead of three?
Because we are required to bring the house either up to, we, we have to bring the house up as close as possible to the whole house, up to property maintenance standards, and the state has a series of, a set of rehabilitation standards. It was interesting listening to you talk about Mr. McTammy, because this was one of the arguments we had on a pretty regular basis, because when these programs first started, one year you could do roofs, one year you could do sidewalks, one year you could replace heaters. The state changed all that and said, "We want you to do the whole house. We don't want to be a maintenance program. You do the house, you bring it up to code, and then it's up to the homeowners to try and maintain it." So, that's, that's why we can't spread it out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. So, I need a motion to approve Resolution 2018-26 approving the CDBG application.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
President Leonard, I have one announcement I just need to make. There is an emergency simulation exercise that, that is planned for Sunday, November 4th, that will be coordinated and run by our departments and our emergency management coordinator, Bob Zinni. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was on your radar, that November 4th, there will be an emergency simulation exercise. You'll get details in your upload in terms of date, time, and exactly what that entails for elected officials, which will just be an observation of how the drill actually plays out. We'll also advertise it to the public.
Okay. Do you know where?
I, we, the logistics are being finalized, and I will release the information one.
Mr. Peters?
Thank you, President Leonard. I have several items for council this evening. If we could go back on the record, please. This is the scheduled date and time for consideration of the following ordinance, an ordinance of the Borough of Contra Hocken, Montgomery County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending the Code of Ordinances of the Borough of Contra Hocken, Chapter 27 zoning, Part 24 SP dash four, specially planned District Four. By amending the regulations relating to height, repealing prior inconsistent ordinances or parts of ordinances, providing a savings clause, and setting an effective date, I have two Borough exhibits. The first Borough Exhibit One is a copy of the ordinance that's under consideration, and Borough Exhibit Two is the proof of publication. The ordinance was advertised as retired by, as required by the municipality's planning code on October 2nd and October 9th of 2018 in the Times Herald and the Times Herald Digital. Council has seen this applica, or the ordinance before, I mean, you authorized advertisement of the ordinance last month. This ordinance amends the SP four zoning district's regulations to increase the height from 180 feet to 190 feet, but only if the additional height is necessary to accommodate mechanical equipment, which includes elevators, architectural improvements designed to camouflage that mechanical equipment, and other features related to the mechanical equipment, and it's to advance leadership in energy and environmental design, lead design elements and sustainability objectives. The requirements for the increased height are that the, the design elements and the mechanicals must be, A, setback from the primary facade of the building a distance of no less than 20 feet, B, be not visible from the rights-of-way immediately adjacent to the building, and C, any architectural features that are used to screen the mechanicals shall be consistent with the, the design materials, quality, and finish of the remainder of the building. The ordinance has a Part Two. Part Two relates to, to maximum wall height. The ordinance would amend the maximum wall height in the SP four district from 10 feet, and it's, it's only the visible portion of the retaining walls, so the retaining walls can go further down into the ground, but the, currently, the maximum visible portion of retaining walls shall not exceed 10 feet. The ordinance would amend that to provide that the visible portion of any retaining wall may be increased to 13 feet if the visible portion of the wall fronts a loading and/or service area internal to the unified development. So, these are for loading and service areas, not out next to the rights-of-way, but interior to the development. The ordinance first came to the Borough on a petition from the applicant for the Sora West Development Keystone Properties. There are representatives from Keystone here, Jen Wonder and Rob Gunlock. They would be happy to answer any questions you may have. With that, I'll first ask if council has any questions, and then we'll, we'll turn it over to the public for any questions. Seeing no questions from council, are there any questions from the public? Let the record reflect that there are no questions from the public. Jen and Rob, unless you have something further to add, I think we'll move to a vote. At, at this time, if council is so inclined, you may vote to approve the ordinance, and I don't have an ordinance number, I'm sorry.
I have it. Motion to adopt ordinance 05-2018 amending, is that the right one?
That's it.
Yep, amending the SP four zoning ordinance. So, I'll need a motion?
Can I just ask one question before the motion?
Yep.
Sorry, I just want clarification on the parking that's next. So, in, in the parking, it's 150 parking spaces that are for the Borough, for the residents to use during the day, and then after 6:00 PM, the garage opens for other parkings? I just need clarification to understand that parking.
So, this particular amendment that we're voting on is just for, to amend the ordinance regarding the height for the buildings and the retaining wall?
It's next.
So, you will answer that question?
Okay, no, that's okay. We can, we'll do this and then proceed.
Now, you know one of the things you'll be answering, Jen.
Heads up for you. That's okay.
No, no problem, councilmember Sokolowski at all.
So, we will need a motion to adopt ordinance 05-2018 amending the SP four zoning ordinance.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I will be making, I, I will be making, I'm recusing myself from the.
And Mr. Sokolowski will recuse. All opposed? Motion carries.
With that, we will close the hearing on that ordinance. If we could go back on the record, we have another hearing. Just give me one moment. This is a hearing on the petition again of Keystone Properties Group for the vacation of certain streets that are located within the area of the Sora West Development. I have two Borough exhibits. Borough Exhibit One is the proof of publication. This hearing on their petition was advertised on October 2nd, 2018, and October 9th, 2018, as required by the Borough Code in the Times Herald and the Times Herald Digital. Borough Exhibit Two is a copy of a letter dated October 2nd, 2018, from me to Keystone River Crossings First LP, Keystone River Crossing Elm LP, Borough of Contra Hocken, Redevelopment Authority of Montgomery County, and Washington Hose and Steam Fire Engine Company Number One. The letter is notice of the street vacation because the foregoing entity's own properties adjacent to these streets to be vacated. Those streets are specifically West Hector Street and Forest Street. And on this one, I, I would ask that Jen and/or Rob explain to council specifically the areas to be vacated.
So, we're requesting vacation of two streets. One is West Hector Street between Oak Street slash Robinson Alley and Fayette Street. The other street is a portion of Forest Street, which is between West Elm Street, going internal into the site and intersecting with West Hector Street. And this would revert the rights to the streets to both property owners on each side, from the middle line to the property line, and then we would acquire them via agreement from both the Washies Firehouse and the Borough and RDA, who are the other property owners of those streets.
And Jen, the properties to be vacated are interior to the, not the properties, I'm sorry, the streets to be vacated are interior to your unified development, is that correct?
Yes, correct, yes. They're on the, the block bounded by Fayette, Elm Street, Robinson Alley, and First Avenue.
With that, I will first ask council if they have any questions. Seeing none, is there anyone here from the public this evening that has an interest in this petition or would like to make a comment? Let the record reflect that there are none. With that, if council is so inclined, you can grant the ordinance vacating these streets, and again, I don't have an ordinance number, I'm sorry.
I have it. Motion to adopt ordinance 06-2018 vacating a portion of West Hector Street and Forest Street.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jen, I, I will be recusing myself from the vote.
Please note that. And all opposed? Motion carries.
And with that, we will close that hearing, and bear with me one second. And we will excuse our court reporter. Thank you very much.
It's all you, Mike.
We are now moving into the next phase of the Keystone applications to the Borough. This is the application for preliminary and final land development, as council is aware. Keystone presented at, at your work session meeting and ran over in general terms the development as it has been amended since council granted preliminary land development approval earlier this year. I have prepared and circulated to council a resolution, if council felt inclined to grant it, which outlines the application and also sets forth certain conditions that have been recommended by Borough Administration and the Borough professionals. What I'd like to do, Jen first, is probably run through the resolution unless proposed, and then if council has any questions, they can ask you and Rob, if that's okay. So, the council has, or the resolution as proposed first outlines the history of the property and what is being proposed, as council is aware. This property contains a firehouse, a historic firehouse, two office buildings, and an above-ground parking garage. All buildings, with the exception of the historical firehouse and a portion of the firehouse, are to be demolished under the plan. The property would then be put into a unified development, as that term is defined under the SP four zoning district, and would contain, as council, again, is well aware, an approximately 10,014 square foot, it'll be a 10,014 square foot parcel. No, I'm sorry, give me a second here. Okay, what, what is being, what will be constructed is an 11-story, 44,327 square-foot office retail building with 150 parking spaces located in the garage below, and eight-story, 12,045 square-foot hotel retail restaurant building with 19 valet spaces below, a 12 and 1/2-tier, 1,505-space parking garage with a 38,674-square-foot footprint, a three-story, 2,200-square-foot footprint brew pub with an associated beer garden, a public plaza between the office and retail building, and a public plaza also containing a portion of the brew pub. The applicant is proposing to install two underground basins, one by a retention base and a rain garden and other associated improvements. As council is aware, the applicant received conditional use approval to permit a reduction in the number of required parking spaces. That decision and order are dated May 17th of 2017. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the plan, subject to certain conditions, and those conditions are set forth, I mean, and this also includes the conditions recommended by staff and professionals. The applicant shall revise the plans to comply in all respects with the Contra Hocken Code of Ordinance. That includes your SADO, your zoning ordinance, and your stormwater management ordinance, except to the extent weighed by the resolution. The applicant shall comply with the Borough Engineer, Borough Zoning Officer, and Borough Traffic Engineer Review Letters. The applicant shall obtain the approval of the Fire Marshal for the proposed emergency access throughout the property. The applicant shall obtain the, the approval of Borough Administration and the Washies Fire Company for the proposed construction sequencing and/or planning, and that's to ensure that the fire company's firefighting and emergency response operations are not interrupted during construction. The applicant shall provide ADA accessibility throughout the site. As the applicant explained, when they were before you earlier this month, they are proposing an ADA lift along Fayette Street, and they also must provide a direct ADA accessible route from the parking garage to the public plaza area, which I know they are in these stages of doing. The applicant shall enter into an agreement with the Borough for the provision of public parking to replace those parking spaces currently subject to a license agreement between the Borough and the applicant. For public parking between the hours of 6:00 PM and 2:00 AM, Monday through Sunday, this is during the time of construction, which parking shall be at no cost to the Borough and shall expire upon the completion and occupancy of the new parking garage shown on the plan. The applicant shall enter into an agreement with the Borough for the public parking, the 150 spaces within the new garage. Those 150 public parking spaces are required by the decision and order from May that I previously mentioned. It'll be subject to such requirements as the parties agree to in the parking agreement, including but not limited to hours limitations. The applicant shall be permitted to use a portion of those spaces to satisfy parking demand for the retail and restaurant customers and employees. So, if customers come to the site to utilize or to go to, for example, the brew pub, those customers may park there. But again, the parking spaces will be identified as public parking and will be subject to the public parking requirements. The applicant has acknowledged that the office tenant requires more than the minimum number of parking spaces than required under the zoning ordinance. The applicant and the office tenant are subject to a lease, so there is a certain number of required spaces that they are obligated to provide to the tenant. This condition sets forth that if the office tenant determines, and it's in its sole discretion because, again, it's subject to a lease, that it no longer requires the original parking. They will seek to negotiate in good faith with the Borough to provide additional public parking. Again, keep in mind that the public parking that's being provided after 6:00 PM, the whole, the whole thing opens up, so we'll have 1,505 parking spaces for residents and visitors, but this provides for those, those off-peak hours, or I'm sorry, peak hours for additional parking, if it, if it's possible, down the road, if the tenant no longer needs them. The applicant shall enter into an agreement with the Borough for use of the public plaza area by the Borough and the public, which shall provide that the applicant shall be solely responsible for maintenance of the public plaza area. The applicant shall execute easement agreements with the Borough to provide for public access to, from, and throughout the public areas of the property, including the public plaza and the parking garage, and shall be responsible for maintenance of those easement areas. The applicant shall provide a logistics plan satisfactory to the Borough's Department of Licenses and Inspections to demonstrate that the public plaza area located between the brew pub and the brew pub seating area will remain clear and unimpeded for public access. As you recall, part of the public plaza area goes through the, the one seating area for the, well, not through, but separates the one seating area for the brew pub, from the brew pub itself. We're confident that they will be able to provide a logistics plan, but we just want to see it before it's approved. All public areas on the property, including the public plaza, shall be non-spoken areas and shall be signed as such by the applicant. The applicant shall provide facade screening on, at a minimum, the Fayette Street, Elm Street, and West First Avenue side. You had an opportunity to view the current proposal for the facade screening. Any material modification from that proposal shall be subject to the approval of the Borough. The applicant shall provide wayfinding signage throughout and along the property, again, subject to the approval of the Borough. Any material modification to the design of the public plaza areas as currently shown will be subject to further approval of the Borough. The accessible route from the property to the Septa Train Station and the improvements required. and the improvements required to effectuate that accessible route, as required by PennDOT, shall be subject to Ms. McNair's review if they are not otherwise reviewed and approved by PennDOT. The concern is that because they are outside of the PennDOT right-of-way, PennDOT may not opine, and if they don't, then our Borough Engineer will. The applicant shall execute land development and escrow agreement satisfactory to my office, as well as stormwater management agreement satisfactory to my office. The applicant shall obtain and provide copies of any third-party outside-agency approvals and provide those to the borough. The applicant shall satisfy any and all outstanding invoices from the borough relative to the project and shall otherwise abide by all terms and conditions of the resolution. The only thing we need to go through still is the waivers. Several of these waivers were already granted by the preliminary approval that you granted back earlier in 2018. But the current waiver is being requested, and that would be granted should you adopt this resolution or a waiver from 22-308A to permit simultaneous application for preliminary and final land development, from 22-404.2F to permit six driveway loading entrances along the four-street frontages of the property, a waiver from 22-404.2B to permit driveways with a width greater than the maximum width, the 25 feet for the following locations, and that's for the hotel driveway, the loading dock, and the garage entrance off of Robinson Alley. A waiver from 22-404.3.7 to permit the following parking dimensions: eight-foot-wide parallel parking along Fayette Street, which matches the current parking stall size; eight to eight-and-a-half-wide parking within the garage and along the firehouse; valet drive aisle width beneath the parking, beneath the hotel of less than the required 24 feet; and 75-degree angled parking within the parking garage, which is designed to maximize the amount of parking that is in the garage. A waiver from 22-404.3H to permit no screening for the loading area along Robinson Alley, however, subject to the requirement that trucks using the loading area be pulled all the way into the loading dock so that the loading dock doors can be closed. A waiver from 22-405.1C to permit the following sidewalk widths, other than the minimum required 15-foot width, 16.5 feet along Oak Street and Robinson Alley, 11.7 feet along First Avenue, 15 feet along Fayette Street, and 14.5 feet along Elm Street. A waiver from Section 22-405.1G to permit sidewalks within Fayette Street right-of-way to be designed consistent with the public plaza area. Right now, they need to be consistent with PennDOT and/or the borough's design standards. This waiver is being requested so that the entryway to the public plaza area can be consistent with each other in terms of design and material. A waiver from Section 405-2.A to permit a six-inch curb reveal instead of the minimum required eight-inch curb reveal. A waiver from 22-409.1D to permit sidewalk slopes generally conforming to the existing roadway slopes instead of the maximum permitted 5% sidewalk slopes, subject to the approval of the Borough Engineer. A waiver from 22-409.2 to permit grading within three feet of the property right-of-way. A waiver from 22-410.4.8 to permit drainage pipes of less than the minimum required 18-inch diameter, subject to the approval of the Borough Engineer. A waiver from 22-421.4 to permit street trees within the right-of-way consistent with the surrounding streetscape. A waiver from 22-421.6.C to permit a mounting height of greater than 12 feet for the pedestrian lighting, and that's to increase the amount of light and decrease the amount of poles that are in the way. And a waiver from 22-421.6.C to permit pedestrian lighting to be spaced at greater than 50 feet. That is the resolution that is currently before council. The applicant is here, again, represented by Ms. Lender and Mr. Gunlack. I also note that their professionals are all assembled here as well, should you have any questions. And so now is the time to ask. And Tina, we'll start off with you.
I'll start with my parking. Obviously, parking is a very sensitive subject down below. So I just want to clarify so that everybody understands that it's 150 parking spaces for the borough during the day. And then at 6:00 p.m., basically, the garage opens up, and then we have access to all additional parking spaces. Is that correct?
Yes, correct. And that parking will, we're still working out the parking agreement, but that will be probably until about 2:00 a.m., the permitted parking.
Okay. Jen, I have a question. Part of the resolution requires Keystone to replace the public parking for the borough during the construction. And what are your plans for that so far?
Our plans are to open up Keystone's other parking garage at 125 East Elm Street. So that will be open during the same hours as the current agreement, which is Monday through Sunday, 6:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m.
And that is at no cost to the borough?
Correct.
So also, the previous agreement with the borough for the parking that the garage is going to be torn down, it is, you are going to waive that agreement for the borough at no cost also? Is that correct?
Yes, that will essentially be amended by this, by a new agreement that we'll enter into that replaces the current parking spaces with 125 East Elm Street.
But they'll be at no cost, is that correct? Okay.
And how many spaces would be available at 125 East Elm? Do we have an approximate?
125. 125.
25 at 125.
But that's only for 6:00 to 2:00 a.m.?
Correct.
And have you done anything, gone into any negotiations or approached St. Mary's for their available parking?
We have not yet.
And that's something that you will be doing for the, on behalf of the borough at no cost also, is that correct? Where are we going to get our rest of our parking?
So we have parking there on the day, right? We pay for parking and it's full, the deck is full during the day?
You're talking about St. Mary's Church?
No, the, next to the
First Avenue, the parking garage.
So we have, I think we have, I think we have a spot, a dead spot. So we have a parking deck that's full during the day between 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. And you're taking that away. So where would all those cars go?
Right.
So that, that parking deck is strictly for the office building today, during the day. That's, there are people parking there, I'm sure, but
This is a residential building from, by St. Mary's?
Correct. No, we saw that First Avenue.
You're talking about First Avenue.
We're asking for clarification. So Mr. Brookshire in July offered the option to approach St. Mary's Church about parking in their lots adjacent to former residential buildings north of the church. So we're just making sure that Keystone is going to uphold that option in the parking agreement.
So I think those were discussions related to where we could provide. I think there were a few options. That was one option. The other option was to have the parking in the existing garage at 125 East Elm.
Right.
So what we're proposing is to open up that garage.
Okay, and I think what the borough is asking back to Keystone is that you look into and come back to us with what is available at St. Mary's.
Also, for additional parking.
Right.
Would that be during the day or in the evening?
Just during the day.
That parking is used by guppies.
Yeah, but they haven't had any breaks.
The answer may be nothing.
Right, but we're asking that you would, right.
I'm pretty sure Certainly inquire of them and ask as to their willingness to supply that.
Right, you know, our concern is to get the most parking that we can. This is not going to be a short-term project by any means. So, you know, our interest is to look out, you know, for our residents, our employees, to make sure that we have the parking that we need during the construction.
Again,
So you're telling me that the top deck is designated for the people in the offices who we've now moved out?
Right.
Right? So I would expect that the deck is empty, and it's not.
It would be empty.
But they're not out yet.
But by the time construction
Sure, sure. By the time construction starts, the
So they're not out yet?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, they all have agreements to leave, and they're starting to leave, but most of them are still there.
Okay, so that's why the deck is still full. All right. Because I'm not crazy, the deck is still full. Okay.
Okay. So on clarification, then, Keystone will be amending that we do not have an agreement for the parking that we are losing at no cost. That that will go away, and the new parking will be at no cost to the borough. Is that correct?
During the construction and demolition.
Our was actually paying for it.
Right, right. I think what Ms. Lender is asking is that you will let us out of our contract. And I know that you will. And we will then enter into a new contract or amended agreement for the parking as agreed at 125.
I think you covered that in the resolution, at no cost.
I think so.
Both, we're dismissing one cost and not getting a new cost.
Correct.
That was the clarification. Does anyone else have any questions?
That was it.
Okay. So I will need a motion to approve preliminary preliminary and final land development plans for the Sora West Project per Resolution 2018-27.
I'll make that motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Again, I'll recusing myself from the vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
She's Do you know what? This is making coffee so you're sitting here.
Well, she does.
She's good like that.
They were really off.
No. What's next?
Any public comment?
They didn't agree to wayfinding, did they? Because that's
They did.
They did, because that's down way.
The resolution.
Okay, perfect. I just want to make sure they can find it. Okay, good. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment? Would please come up to the podium and state your name and address.
Yeah, hi. My name is Jerry Jafreda. I live at the Grand on West Elm Street. I guess one of the questions I have about that being done, I mean, the traffic on Elm Street is usually really bad in the afternoon and the morning, and Fayette Street also. Living at the Grand, sometimes trying to get in and out of the parking lots and stuff is ungodly. And now with this going on, is there going to be anything done differently to help during construction? You're going to have a lot of equipment going in and out during this work. How is that going to affect Elm Street? Because that's going to be one of the bigger streets other than Fayette Street with equipment coming in and out and dump trucks, stuff like that. And then once it's all completed, that's going to be putting more cars on Fayette and Elm Street and Maple Street.
Mr. Sakalowski, I think what might be helpful if you can go through the sequencing of how the truck traffic is going to move during the construction?
Currently, we've talked to INTEC. The company is going to be doing the demo shot. They have a preliminary plan as to how they're going to bring in traffic and reroute it out onto Fayette Street. We have gone back to Keystone and asked them to have conversations with INTEC to remove as much truck traffic off of West Elm Street as possible. So we haven't heard back from Keystone on that yet, but it is a concern of ours. We expressed that concern to Keystone. They said that they would talk to INTEC and then reach back out some.
Okay, but like I said, I'm also concerned about the added traffic once the facility's built and we have the hotels and more people coming in and out. I mean, it's good business and offer the area and stuff, but the traffic is a big concern of mine and probably other people who live on Elm Street and stuff like that. I just wanted to bring it up.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
The only thing that I would say that I heard, kind of, that came out of that theme is in and out of the Grand. I don't know if we can request flaggers during that time to help the residents that are leaving for work and coming from work, maybe to get in and out, if that would be something?
Even like if it was somewhere, they don't block the box?
Exactly, right.
Block the box anyway.
Right.
Putting the traffic rails in.
Yeah. Right.
Are you, are you talking about the light that's at Maple? Yeah.
Any more public comment? Hello?
Christopher Jensen at 444.5 West Sixth Avenue. I just wanted to thank council here tonight for listening to the residents of West Sixth and for the residents of the borough, for that matter, in granting and approving the restriping plan. I think it's an important statement, not just for that part of the borough, but for the borough as a whole to support and commit to pedestrian safety. The current residents I know are really, it's really important to a lot of people, and it's a demand that they have. And I know it's important to all of you. And I think it really increases the value of the borough in many ways, both for the current residents and for future residents. So I appreciate Councilwoman Barton and Mayor Yaniv for helping to push that forward. And it's going to be a welcome change to the Sixth Avenue. And it's an inexpensive, yet simple way to really tackle issues like this throughout the borough. So I really encourage more of that because I know there are other areas that need it. And I just think it's important, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to thank Ray and the time he has put into redesigning this for us.
Please come up.
Hi. I'm Carol Lee Roundsville. Live at 405 West 11th Avenue. First, I want to thank whoever's responsible for getting the trees trimmed in the borough. It's great. And another little thing was the gentleman about the boxing event. I think a great fundraiser would be for our senior boxing Wouldn't that be comical? On a more serious note. It's a good idea, though.
It is a good idea.
My concern is similar to the other gentleman from another direction. You can't get out of the borough in the morning. I'm sure all of you are aware of that. And then you can't get back in. So coming from West 11th, we have choices of coming up to Fayette Street, and then you're in a total stack area all the way to get across the bridge. I just can't fathom what's going to happen when all of this development, not just the process of it, but afterwards, it's, I hear a lot about the parking and all this. That's wonderful, but how are people going to move in the borough? I just, it really is a big concern. We come, we've tried numerous ways of getting out of the area other than, we're thinking of a helicopter pad on top of our house. But, you know, we've tried Caldwell. You get in a bottleneck just even on there, trying to get out. The timing of the lights, it's really
There will be new, there will be new lights and traffic patterns.
So do we want to talk about that just real quick? 2019 to 2020 and what's happening with the traffic lights now that we know a little bit more of a timeframe?
In terms of the CMAC program? So the bid has gone out and it's been awarded, so it's moving forward. And the traffic now will be coordinated. The traffic lights will be coordinated. It's actually going to be monitored through PennDOT. And how it will work is that they will externally, at their site, be able to monitor the traffic patterns and the traffic signals. And the idea is that from the bottom of Fayette all the way up through Ridge Pike, that they'll be able to actually coordinate the signals and move the traffic. That's what it's supposed to do. So the bid is out, and we are finally moving forward with it. We're actually going to have Mr. Kieveney, who's our traffic engineer here,[1748.54] So today, the lights are on random timers that are set by some status, I guess, at PennDOT? It's not coordinated, right. Right, they're not coordinated, which is why some lights you sit longer, and then the traffic backs up all the way to Caldwell Lane. Correct. The idea would be they would be able to watch the traffic and open the green lights longer to get the traffic flow through. That's correct. Okay.
So that should help also.
That and the new train station.
Any more public comments, questions?
I'll believe it when I say it.
Okay. So we're going to move on to council comments, and mayor, if no one minds, I would like to go first. I actually have a request of Mr. Tierney. Mr. Tierney, on your blog today, under the recycling development implementation grant that we received, you stated that the borough was discontinuing our leaf collection. I received quite a few complaints from that. The borough is not and never was discontinuing leaf collection, only grass clippings. So if maybe you could fix that in your blog, I would appreciate it. Anyone else? Let's start with the mayor.
So first off, I want to thank council and admin and public works and the police for helping us put on the Beer Festival this weekend. I think it turned out really, really well, and it was just another great event in Conshohocken that I've been hearing about all week. So thank you, everyone, for all your hard work on that, and I know the Rotary Club appreciates that as well. The Environmental Advisory Council is doing a West Side Streets Cleanup on Saturday. It's going to start at 9:30 at the Bachi Club and end at 11:30, and Guppies is going to host us for lunch afterward with drink and food specials. And I want to give a thank you to How Properties for donating for materials and gloves and bags and things like that. So if any of you are available on a cold, what's looking like a cold and rainy Saturday morning, you're welcome to join us. The Boy Scouts will be there. Next thing is, since we're not going to see each other for a little while, the Halloween Parade's on October 27th. 3:00 PM registration starts at Fire Company Number Two, and the parade starts at 4:00 going down to Washi's. There is a new pet category for this year, so it should be a fun one. And then, lastly, IKEA was in touch with the borough and with me to have a costume donation, and I believe we're having a bin at the community center, Lauren? Yes.
I have a CD today, so it's up until Thursday, or something like that.
Okay. And there'll also be collection bins at brunch, Guppies, and Feen. So if anyone knows of costumes that you've outgrown or are tired of, they'll be accepting donations, and then they will pick up and deliver to CNC to give out until Halloween. So thanks.
So can I just jump in real fast on the Halloween Parade? Kate Cosman in our office is organizing the final logistics of it, and she just asked me to ask council if there was anyone and the mayor that wanted to participate. Specifically, we're looking for judges along the street, prize distribution and announcements, and if anyone wants to give a quick speech on behalf of the borough. So if you can just let me know if you're interested by Friday, and then we'll designate responsibilities and day of.
And I would urge our council members to volunteer to be judges. Except for Jane.
Yeah, that's the worst job ever. All children are viewed as...
I will do all of the above, so...
Okay, great, thank you.
I'll do anything but judge.
Bob?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank council for the support, for dedicating this room to Jerry McTominay. I think it was a great thing we did tonight for the family and for the borough, and I think Jerry was a force in this borough for the revitalization. Thank you.
Just a reminder that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and we encourage everyone to get your routine screening, who is eligible for routine screening. We also, on Saturday, are having an event. St. James AME is having Pink Pearls of Hope Event, where Susan Coleman comes in and has speakers, and it's a great event for the community and people in the community to learn about breast cancer and what is available out there. So if you have time to come by, that event is from noon to 4:00 at the community center. And then, lastly, it's that time of year, don't forget to get your flu shots. They are expecting that this year's flu season is going to be a tough one, so I strongly encourage the residents to go to your doctor and get your flu shots, or CVS, I think, has flu shots as well.
And Giant.
And Giant.
And as they, I would like to remind everyone, also, as the mayor mentioned, the Halloween Parade, I believe on that day, the community center is doing their pumpkin painting, and that starts at noon? At noon? And that is free. It's free for...
We encourage registration.
Okay, yes, please. So everyone come and enjoy that first. It's a wonderful day out for all the little children, painting pumpkins, having fun. And that's all I have.
And tomorrow night is our fire prevention demonstration?
Yes.
At Fifth Avenue in front of the Mary Wood Park House. So you're all invited to that?
Yes.
Six o'clock, seven?
Seven to nine.
Seven to nine. So you're all invited to that tomorrow night.
I'm good.
I didn't have anything, thank you.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.